To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Pastor Drake, thank you for joining us.
My pleasure. Thanks, Mayor. Let's pray. Lord, I just first want to acknowledge you as the maker of heaven and earth. And we just appreciate so much the life that you've given us and, you know, just remembering Mr. Byrd and that you brought him here to help with the city and all the things he did. And we just appreciate him, God, and we have gratitude for our own life and the free life that we do have, God. We also just acknowledge that you're the provider of comfort for us in times of loss and the needs. I'm thinking of, Lord, the needs in our city, like someone who might need a job, that they would find work, and maybe a child in foster care, Lord, that's just wishing for a family, God, to adopt them. We just pray for those kids and, God, someone who doesn't feel safe tonight, Lord, that they could just find a place of refuge. Refuge. And, God, also, we're grateful for this free society that we live in. And with that comes a measure of evil. And we just pray that you'd protect us from evil and that the men and women who protect our city would have the necessary resources and help to do that. We appreciate them, God. And, Lord, here tonight, we're praying for the wisdom for our city leaders, actually, everybody who works in this building. Just pray that you would give them lots of wisdom. And especially here again tonight for the council and the city council and our mayor. Lord, I pray that you give them lots of guidance as they lead this meeting and make decisions. The big ones and small ones, they're all important to you. And so, Lord, would you just help with all these business matters? And thank you, God, for listening to me. And we just pray for your hand of protection upon the city of Meridian. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
God bless you guys.
Thank you. Pastor Drake, you remind me of my dad. His prayers were like just talks with God. So thank you. Okay, item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Item 10A is going to come off the agenda and be moved to a different date. That's the only change we have today. So I would move that we adopt the agenda with that amendment. Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Mr. Clerk, any signups under five?
No one. Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published for the mayor to sign and clerk to it. Test. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Our next item is under the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council update. Ben, I didn't see you. So I'll turn this over to Ben.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm Ben Hutchins with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. I'm the vice chair this year. So our update for the past month, first up is we had our legislative breakfast. This year, we're proposing that we lower the voting age to seventeen for primaries if the individual will be eighteen by the general election. This event was a great success. And we decided, based off of our deliberation with all of the people that we had invited, that next year's the year we're going to be bringing this to the House and Senate. If we have it perfected over this year, we're going to take it this year into deeper consideration and make sure that we have it as good as we possibly can. We're going to take it to the Republican Party and see what they're going to do to pass it, what they would do to make it look better. We're going to take it to the Democratic Party as well. Next up, we had youth lobby day. We had over twenty high school participants. We partnered with the American Heart Association and we partnered with Safe Routes to School. This was another awesome event where we got to go speak to senators and legislators and get really in the feel of what it's like to be in the Capitol Building as lobbyists, which was always a unique experience for teenagers, talking to people that normally we wouldn't be able to talk to and have conversations, that normally people our age wouldn't be able to have conversations about. We lobbied for Safe Routes to School to get funding continued throughout the next years because their bill was sunsetting. And we wanted, and all of us decided that this was something that affected us and we thought would reflect well. Next, we are having with our Community Service Subcommittee Volunteer Fair. We're volunteering with the, or we're partnering with the Meridian Library. And we're going to have a Mayak booth there where we're going to see what a volunteer fair is like and see what we can do in the future and really get our feet in the water and see what it's like. Next, we have plans for Valentine's Day coming up, where the school ambassadors recently made over three hundred sixty Valentine's Day cards to pass out throughout their schools for anybody who may not get Valentine's Day cards on Valentine's Day to make everybody feel welcome and happy. And then we're having a Valentine's Day party on February fourteenth.
You stand for questions, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, any questions or comments? You guys are rocking it.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Senate Council.
Thank you, Ben.
Great job.
Okay. Item nine A is under action items. And this is a request for reconsideration for Timber Creek H. 2018-0042. And item B is also a request for reconsideration that I will turn these two items for comments first from our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have two items before you tonight, a request for reconsideration on the Timber Creek project, H. 2018-0042. Both of them have raised various issues with your approval of that project. At this point, for reconsideration, the council's decision point is either to affirm the decision that's been previously made, that it had to be done by motion and a vote, modify the findings, so you would have to motion to either remand it for the limited purpose of modifying the findings and bringing it back at a later date for that final document, or reversing the findings, that be done by motion or vote to reverse the original findings or direction, as well as resetting it for a public hearing at a future date. So those are the three decision points for you to make tonight. We have reviewed the record. We have reviewed the requests for reconsiderations. We have provided you with our legal opinion on moving forward with it from this point. I can go into that if you wish, or if you can take it from there, whichever you prefer.
Counsel, what would your preference be? Would you like him to detail that out? You've all received the memo. I think if there are any questions, then we'll direct it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. So, counsel in front of you, you have two different requests for reconsideration. So we will open this up for discussion and our questions. Mr. Borton.
This was, this was a project and an application that I had voted against and wasn't supportive of back in September. And stated the reasons why back then. But the purpose of what I understand the reconsideration today is, is a little more narrow. Didn't see any specific deficiency in the process utilized. Not necessarily certain there's a deficiency, any legal deficiency in the substance of the decision made either. However, it may be helpful, if a remand were to occur, to do so to more clearly state the findings of fact and conclusions of law from the existing record. And would be supportive of a remand for that purpose, to try to more clearly articulate within the record those findings and conclusions, perhaps better than it had been done before. Probably benefits everybody to do that and make that more clear. If that's the way this could be addressed, I don't know, Mr. Neri.
Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Borton. Yes, this is a very lengthy record in this case, as you all know. We had a number of hearings for a number of hours. So the record is very large. And we would recommend that we make clearer the findings that you have, not the decision, but just the findings. Because from those findings stems the development agreement. We had a number of discussions about the development agreement. And in reviewing the record, those discussions took place over a number of hearings. And you discussed them in parts. And so, and there were changes to the original development agreement that were proposed that you discussed in September and then again, I believe, in November. And so what we would recommend is what Councilmember Borton is suggesting and doing that. And then that way, the development agreement that flows from those findings is clearer and more concise and in one document. Because again, as we discussed them, we discussed pieces. We changed some of the original to, there was some new numbering that was done. And some of those things in that detail is in the record, but it's in two different parts. So we would suggest that would make a cleaner record for appeal if that's where we end up.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Another question for legal counsel is, we've got two separate requests for reconsideration. Are we addressing them each individually or?
Yes.
Should we handle the number A right now?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Borton, we open them both for your discussion, but I would, I would recommend you make motions on each one separately.
Sure. Madam Mayor, another follow up. If I heard you correctly, is, would it be remanding for, setting forth the findings of fact, conclusions of law in a more clear, inclusive, succinct manner than they were previously done?
Yes. And with, and with the modified development agreement that goes along with it, yes.
Okay. It wouldn't be an amendment of any substantive finding?
No.
All right. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
With that explanation, as to item nine A, H. 2018-0042, I would move that we grant the request for reconsideration for the limited purpose of remanding for new findings of fact, conclusions of law, consistent with what legal counsel has provided. I believe the DA would be part of that as well. And that to come back before counsel for its review and approval.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item nine B.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Review of nine B, this is Mr. Pearson's letter. It seems to mirror some of the substantive issues raised in the nine A request for reconsideration. Some of the same concerns. Echo what I said in the previous application. Same applies here as far as where my position was on the original application. Nonetheless, could benefit us and all parties to go the same route with this one. So I'll make a motion and we can discuss after if there's discussion. But I would move that we grant the request for reconsideration on item nine B as well with the same directive for it to be remanded for findings of fact, conclusions of law, consistent with the existing record in a more complete, succinct manner, inclusive of the DA that legal counsel has referenced just moments ago.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Okay. Item nine C is a public hearing for the first reading of ordinance nineteen dash one eight zero nine. Mr. Clerk, will you read this ordinance by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number nineteen dash one eight zero nine, an ordinance adding a new chapter, chapter six, to Title III Meridian City Code regarding vehicle sharing programs, amending Meridian City Code Section four dash two dash two regarding party responsible for nuisance, adding a new section, Meridian City Code Section seven dash one dash nine, to Title VII, Chapter one, Meridian City Code, regarding electric power, assisted bicycles and scooters, adding a new subsection, subsection seven dash one dash nine F, to Meridian City Code Section seven dash one dash nine, regarding prohibited parking, adopting a savings clause and providing an effective date.
You have, I have opened this public hearing and heard the first reading. Mr. Clerk, do we have any signed up to provide comments?
Madam Mayor, it looks like we have one. Randy Rutledge.
Yes. Come on down. Sorry. You're not a contestant on The Price is Right, but it just...
That's too bad. Thank you.
If you'll, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy Rutland. Address is one two zero six three West Rockhampton Street in Boise, Idaho.
Thank you.
My reason for coming this evening was to get a little bit more information on Meridian's take on the ride sharing program with the scooters, and which companies plan to come to Meridian, if it's the same as what the city of Boise does. Because I do have comments on both companies that are currently with Boise. So that's my question, is if, will it be the Lime Company as well as the Byrd Scooter Company?
Thank you. And, Mr. Neri, do we have a presentation on this?
Madam Mayor, I mean, I certainly can, for the record purpose, for the folks in the audience you're watching, what you have in front of you tonight is a proposal to create a franchise program in the city that will be limited at the, under this iteration to two franchisees. So we don't have a franchisee, as the gentleman questioned, we don't have any franchisees yet. So this is to establish that program to be able to operate within the city of Meridian.
Okay.
So those details can be found as they are contained in the ordinance. We will, I suppo, I think we'll have three readings. And so this is just the first reading, so it would introduce it to the public. You have an opportunity to review the ordinance and ask any questions that you have regarding the ordinance. But it would be, as Mr. Neri indicated, we don't pick who the e-scooter companies would be. It would be on a fair, even basis. So first two in are the first two that, that offer the service in the city of Meridian. Is that correct, Mr. Neri?
Yes, ma'am.
I see. All right. I think that answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
So you mentioned you had some comments specific to the two companies that we have experience with?
I do. I, I actually am considered an independent contractor with both of them. And I have pros and cons for both companies. Obviously, the pros would be the, the fact that it takes away some of the traffic, parking issues that the city may encounter, pollution, an affordable, cheap ride to get, you know, maybe your first or last mile of your trip wherever you go. Some of the cons are, though, is that their customer service is very poor, in my opinion. I've, I've been working with them for the last few months since they've established in Boise in late November, or, I'm sorry, late October. And, you know, whether there's a decision to be made or it's already been made and whether or not you bring on the e-scooter companies. You know, hopefully there's some talk about, and I, and I've read the stipulations that are required by them. However, there's zero talk about what it does for the community as an independent contractor and what they have to go through in order to succeed with their profits. So basically, it's really a customer service thing. Their, their technology is, they claim to be a billion dollar company, each one of them. And yet, their technology is, is poor at best, as far as their app and the way you use their system.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Additional question for you, Mr. Rutland. As an independent contractor, can you share with us what type of direction you receive from the, the two companies that you contract with about where to place these scooters?
Yes, it's, it's on their app. So it's on their, on, when you use your phone, it will tell you exactly where the scooter is to be deployed. Now, with both companies, it's before seven AM. And there's many times where there's, this morning, for example, I went to deploy a couple of Byrd scooters, and it told me to scan a regular Byrd. Now, I didn't know what that meant, so I asked them. Now, unfortunately, the only correspondence you can have with them is through email. There's nobody you can talk to on the phone. So you really have to wait for them to reply back to you. And my question literally was, would you like me to scan a woodpecker, a crow? What would you like me to scan? Certainly, I was being funny, because it's kind of frustrating. I work downtown at the courthouse in Boise. And, I mean, it's just frustrating when you're trying to do what they ask of you, but yet there's multiple, multiple glitches with their app.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for joining us.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide comment on, on this item? Mr. Palmer.
I would. So only in like the last hour, it was, the point was brought up to me that there's more than two. I didn't even know. Companies out there and that it's literally the first two that can hit submit fast enough. And so when I would read through the ordinance, I wasn't really, had that in mind, so I wasn't really looking for, you know, performance requirements. So I don't know if they're in there or not. But my concern with that would be if, if there are multiple ones that are interested, if there's more than two, do we have built into the ordinance any kind of, they have to have so many deployed by a certain date or anything like timeframe? Because my concern would be that if, if that doesn't happen, somebody could just kind of buy up the franchise and wait until they're ready, whether it's six months a year down the road. Or, I mean, if, if I owned one, I don't know if you could get away with it, but I would imagine I would probably want to just set up another entity and take them both and then just not do the other one. And then you instantly would have exclusivity.
Mr. Neri.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Palmer? Yes, that's exactly correct. So there are, there are two contemplated. The minimum is a hundred and the maximum is three fifty. So of ones that can have, the total amount in the city contemplated under this ordinance currently is seven hundred. There are means to up those. But yeah, there is exactly the scenario you're talking about certainly could occur if they file the application timely and pay the fees. It is based on first in time. So, you know, from, from a standpoint, when we were exploring this since last year, originally, and I think what experienced in the city of Boise and what we experienced here is, at the time we had these discussions, there were only two vendors that expressed any interest. And that, and Boise originally didn't cap the number of vendors. They just capped the minimum and the maximums and the maximum total, but not the vendors themselves. But again, they looked at it with it being probably two. Now, you're correct. We have had inquiries from other vendors that are interested. And this could create that problem where it really is just the first in the door. That's the nature of the licensing. We talked before about franchising and going through a different route of a selection process. That would be different than what's before you right now. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think Councilmember Palmer brings up, I think, a fair concern. But I, I do believe our ordinance gives the city some teeth that if a vendor isn't performing, that they could be removed. And I would take somebody who had the license and is not deploying in an appropriate or timely manner, noncompliant, and we could essentially remove their license and award it to the next in line. So I think there's some, there's a carrot and a stick to have our operators operate appropriately within Meridian.
Did that answer your question?
Madam Mayor, yeah.
Mr. Palmer.
Oops. Sorry, Dean. I usually try to be perfect with that. But yeah, if that satisfies that issue, and I don't know if anyone would attempt this. I know, it's the fat cat capitalist, the free market, unapologetic capitalist in me, thinking these things through. The other thing that I would ponder on, if I were in that position, is could I buy both of them and then paint them a different color, but still be the same entity, using the same app? Or if, and then you'd still have both of them. I don't know if anyone would go to that effort in Meridian to make that happen. But we're still early in this process. And I'd rather not regulate them. But obviously, we're going to. And so I want to make sure that we're giving, making sure that there's an opportunity to actually have competition.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, to answer your question, Councilmember Palmer, so what's required in the application is notice, notice to us when you are going to begin. So it, it doesn't have a start date requirement. So it doesn't require you begin within thirty days or sixty days or whatever. They simply have to tell us when they're going to start. So again, if you'd like us to change that, we can change that. But that's currently the way it is, is they simply notify us when that start date is. So I apologize that Councilmember Cavanagh is not in the room. But so it wouldn't be a violation if they told us the start date was ninety days from now or a hundred and twenty days from now. And they didn't, as long as they started within the time period they set.
Year?
Well, the current, the, sorry, the question was, could it be a year? This license period expires December thirty first of this year. So, and then it's subject to renewal.
Madam Mayor, when we get to the renewal, can whoever has the franchise just be the renewal? Or do they have to reapply at eight AM on the day after their expiration?
I'm looking at, Madam Members of the council, Councilmember Palmer, so the renewal section, basically, the... I don't, the way I read it, now, I wasn't on the committee, and maybe Mr. Coles would know better, but it doesn't read that there's a preference to the current vendor. So it says December fifteenth is when the renewal period begins. And the renew, it says renewing franchisees may request authorization to deploy the number of shared vehicles authorized in the previous year. But that doesn't give them a preference of start. And if I made a mistake, maybe it's somewhere else I just not seeing it. But in the renewal provision, there's no, there's no preference for existing vendors.
Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Mr. Coles?
Councilmember Palmer, so I think that it's the other way around, I believe. So the renewal, it does actually give preference to the current franchisees because they can apply for renewal on December fifteenth, I believe. because they can apply for renewal on December 15th, I believe. However, an initial franchise cannot be applied for until January 2nd. So, an initial one is a franchisee that doesn't currently have the franchise agreement. They can apply January 2nd. The current franchisees can apply for renewal December 15th.
I see, okay.
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Palmer.
Sorry to dive so deep into this, but I'll get it right. So, if, if somebody were to get the first one, could they say, "We plan on starting in 450 days", and then go a year without deploying, just so that they've locked down the position, and then do the renewal, because they were the first one in, and then deploy later in the second year?
Madam Members of the council, no. I, I don't think we would accept an application that the start date exceeds the current period of the license. I, I don't think that we would allow that.
Works for me.
Got your $25,000 ready?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Board.
It brings up a good point. That's the type of clarity, though, would be helpful for the applicant to know. So, whether it's part of, you know, in addition to the initial application for a franchise, that, you know, makes them aware of the fact that whatever they pick as their initial start date must be something, no later than the end of the current term that you're applying for, or 90 days from your application, or something that gives them that understanding that should they want to invest in this program here, there is a date by which they have to launch. They can make a decision.
So, this is just the first reading, so as, as we continue to accept comments, if you find these things and you want to change it, that's the beauty of the three readings, that you have opportunity to, to gain further information and, and look at some of these technicalities or opportunities, depending on how you want to say it. Ms. Low Roberts.
Madam Mayor, since I recently learned, I think like everyone else did, that there are more that are interested than just the two we're familiar with, just maybe some food for thought and discussion at a later time, would we consider maybe doing an RFP, or something, having them be a little more competitive than just if you're first in the door, you're automatically in, and then potentially struggling if they're not meeting our criteria? Said, maybe we need to just think about that some.
That is indeed another approach, and one that you could ask for letters of reference in how they, their technology works, or their experiences in, in other communities, or... It, it would open up for additional discussion as to what those criteria would be. Mr. Neri, anything you want to add?
Madam Members of the council, no, I mean, I think certainly that's, that's an option. Again, that's not what's in front of you, and we could certainly suspend this if that's the direction you wish to go, and move forward with an RFP process, because the, the benefit is, as we previously discussed, you can set the criteria that's most important to you on how this is done, how it's operated, hours of operation, where it's, where it can be, can be used, how it is to be used. Have selection criteria that's weighted for those things, so that you have a way to discern the difference between number one and number whatever. And, and again, if you want a cap of numbers of individual scooters per franchisee, tap on a total amount in the city, whatever, whatever your preference. I mean, certainly, those can be done in RFP. It's a little more difficult than the licensing one, other than having, not having a cap on the number of franchisees. I mean, that's what the city of Boise chose to do.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
The beauty, I guess, of, of the lesser regulation of this version is that you have competition that's created just purely by who wants to get in the market, who gets there first. My concern with an RFP version is then we get to where government is picking who's going to be there, who's going to be allowed to do the business in town. And if, you know, if, if one sucks and the other one doesn't, the free market will take care of it, and people will ride one and not the other. If they suck equally, then either they'll ride them or they won't, but ideally, whoever wants in can get in, if they're the first two, and try to be better than the other, instead of having us just pick who's going to do the most favors for the city. Not that I don't think any of you guys, but I'm worried about future councils that I don't know and trust.
Any, anything further on this? Oh, yes, Chief.
Madam Mayor, council, I just want to point out that using Councilman Palmer's analogy of a business sucking, you just need to realize that not using the ridership, or the ridership is only one part of the suck, is if it's a bad company, it's going to create lots of manpower for us, and so we want to make sure that we have reliable companies in there. I support the RFP process, but I also support the, the free market. If we're going to do the free market, then we need to make sure that we have rules in place that allow us to revoke these people when they do suck, because my experience with a few of the companies have not been great. But I will tell you that there's currently four companies that I'm aware of. Three of those companies are looking, well, two of those companies are in Boise, additional is looking at Boise, and there's a fourth one in the wings. So, there's four floating around there that could come to Meridian. So, just want to point out that not riding them is only one part of the equation. If they got bad business practices, then they're going to create a lot of workload on our part. So, just making sure that whatever ordinance we come up with has a mechanism that we can revoke them if they're poor performers. So, we either judge them before, or we judge them after, but if they are a bad company, we don't want to do business in the city. And since it was a long walk to get here, I'm not going to leave until I make sure there's no questions.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
Chief, since you walked all the way up here in pain, I just want to wonder, I'm wondering if any of those companies are purple? Even purple?
Any of them are purple?
Yes, that's the most important thing.
Just because you have a purple sweater on right now, is that why? Or is there some other reason?
That's her favorite color, just like top lots.
I, I do know that, I do know the colors of two that I will not mention. I do not know the colors of the other two.
I'm just kidding. I, I agree with, with what the chief is saying, and I, I would, I think maybe first come, first served isn't the best route to take on this. I think if there are four companies, we should have a better system for looking at them and picking the two that are going to be the best, at least that we think are going to be the best companies. And, and what happens if you get three at the same time, or all four, all at the same time? So, I think that needs to be looked at more carefully.
I think Mr. Clerk has been looking at that. Would you like to comment?
Absolutely, and to the chief's point, just so the council is aware, my office has been actually in communication with five total companies, so the limited communication, five, I'm not aware of the colors, however, sorry, Councilor Mylan. In terms of the first in, our enterprise software that we use to track intake and issuance of licenses is what we will use to track when we receive applications, so it won't be at our front counter, it'll actually be through our enterprise software, which will date and timestamp, and I'm told it has the ability to go down even to the millisecond in terms of time stamping, so we know who the actual first, first in is, or the first two in. Then from that, we will be looking at completeness of applications. So, if five total companies submit, it's the first two that have submitted, that have a complete application without our office having to go back to say, "You've missed a step," or "You've missed three steps." So, we want to make sure that the application is complete, and that we're lessening the manpower on our staff to walk people through the process, because that takes time to answer questions and walk through the process. So, that's what we've been looking at in terms of the first in, and determining who those first two are.
And you can't be early because you aren't qualified. Mr. Neri, is there a hybrid model you could look at to, to maybe find that middle ground between the two concerns? One, if they're qualified and they meet certain criteria, and then two, that they would have a submission date and still allow the free market to choose them once they are qualified?
So, Madam Mayor, we've had a committee work on this for quite a while, and I know they've explored all of those options. So, under the licensing one, I mean, this is, this is the standard model for licensing, any type of activity. So, I guess the concern, however, when we're talking about deficient business practices, those really aren't something we normally regulate in a licensed circumstance. So, here in the ordinance, if you look at it, really, the only basis for revocation is they're not operating as they told us they would, whatever, whatever they tell us how they're going to operate, so where they locate them, how they locate them, when they put them out, take them back, all of that. They violate the law, or they have lied on their application, or they don't pay the fee. That's it. So, I, I have a sense from everybody talking, what you think of as bad business practice is more than those things, and that's the problem. In the licensing circumstance, it's very difficult to manage preference. And so, that's why the conversation was over an RFP, where you can set out their criteria that you want it to be, and pick your successful vendor based upon that. So, there are, there are just two distinct ways of doing it. But the, the cap on the number creates that race to, to the clerk's office that maybe not, maybe not be the best way to do it. But the only way to really change that is to then not have a cap on the number. You could, what Boise did was they put no cap on the number, they put a requirement of a minimum and a maximum, and a maximum total in the city. And like I said, at the time, I think, if Mr. Coles can confirm, but I think they are considering new caps because of more vendors, because they did the same thing. They just capped the total number in the city, and that allowed more than one vendor to participate, or you could have allowed two or three, but you had them, each one picked up their full load up front, and so it absorbed the entire cap by two vendors to start. That's why they're looking at more.
Boise, Boise's capped at three companies currently.
At three, okay. But I think it's capped based on the numbers.
They have, they have a number, which is 750, not to exceed that, and then they have a cap of three vendors currently.
Right, but I want to, sorry to disagree with you, I don't think it says there's only three allowed in the city.
Yes, it, it...
Oh, it does, okay.
It says only three vendors currently, yes, in their ordinance.
And I guess the committee really focused on if we're going to do this, we want to do it right. And the race to be the first to submit, I don't know if that necessarily will give you the most qualified to, to try and do this right, because I'll, I'll tell you, we had a lot of complaints after the first rollout. And if the comments and the, the phone calls that we've received are any indication, we don't really have a large percentage of our citizens that are supportive of this program to begin with. Kicking it off wrong, I think, would not be a, a good way to, to start a program, to see how it would work, because I, I think, as we heard earlier, there are advantages of, of being an alternate transportation form of, of a low emission and, in a inexpensive way to, to have alternative transportation. So, you would want to do it right. I, I don't know, it's, it's certainly your decisions.
Madam Mayor, council, just to comment on that, and I echo with what you said. I wasn't real supportive of this because of the experience we had first time, but I've really tried to come around and give that benefit to the, to the city, and to the companies that we did have experience with. I will tell you that there's one company that is still very, very disappointing, even after I reached out to them, and they said they heard me. Well, they have now forgotten me, and we still have not met. So, I am really, really concerned if we go forward this way with first in, first come, first serve, because they haven't proven their reliability, and frankly, with what Mr. Neri said about we're limited in how we can revoke, I'm concerned we're going to have a nightmare all over again. So, I think we need to slow down, and we need to not rush this. But that's one person's opinion, so I realize the vote rests with you. Just please proceed cautiously, because that trust has not been earned yet in some of those companies.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavner.
Couple of thoughts. Appreciate the comments from the chief. As one who's worked on RFPs in the past, everyone who works on RFP works really, really hard to make sure your organization looks as best as possible when you submit something, and so I've been on the side where we've selected RFPs for organizations, and they haven't performed to the level that they had indicated and promised they would. Think that, what I'm hearing from the chief, which I think may be worth some further exploration, is strengthening our case, or our basis for revocation, if, if a licensee isn't performing. I think that's more appropriate than entering into an RFP process. Again, I don't know if there are other provisions that the committee that worked on this discussed. Perhaps that's something that we could hear feedback from the committee before a final vote. I'm not one that gets real excited about an RFP process for this, just because I think it's, it's a formalized sales pitch from businesses, and, you know, we, as, as I hear from the chief, it sounds like we've got one operator in the valley right now that has been forthright and is met with the police department, one who is not, and then it sounds like three that are kind of an unknown. So, I, I, I think the mayor's correct, let's try and get this correct, but I think that we can achieve what maybe sounds like some additional council members want to see without necessarily having to invent an RFP process, go through a scoring. And again, scores are determined by a small group of people. Did they have breakfast that morning? Is the, using favorite words? I mean, there's just so many variables that I, I don't get really excited about in an RFP process. So, if we can avoid it, I'm supportive of that, but let's, let's take some of the feedback from the chief, and feedback from you as council. If there's additional teeth that you want to add to give the city greater strength to remove a licensee if they're not performing, I'd support that.
Okay, any other questions for the chief?
I, I can limp back up here if you have them.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
What run? What run were you on?
What was that?
What run were you on?
It was Nugget.
The bunny hill.
On the back side. Yes. Chair six.
Chair six, alright.
Before we got to 16 inches of powder.
Roger, okay.
Yeah.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, anything further? Otherwise, we will put this on the next week's calendar. Okay? Okay, very good. Okay, item 90 is a public hearing, continue through from January 2nd for H 2018-0115. I will ask for staff comments at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This particular item is the Warwick subdivision. It was before you on January 2nd. Excuse me, before I get into that, give you, get you familiar with where the property is located. So, the applicant is here, again, discussing annexation and preliminary plat of the particular project. The site consists of 36.22 acres of land, currently zoned RUT in Ada County, and located on the south side of Amity Road, midway between Locust Grove to the west and Eagle Road to the east. The applicant is asking for split zoning on this particular property. If you remember, at the January 2nd hearing, we had a portion of, half of it, approximately half of it was going to be zoned R8, and the southern portion was going to be zoned R4. During that hearing, the council had some concerns with the applicant's request for a step up, and asked the applicant to revise the plat to lose... a step up and asked the applicant to revise the plat to lose approximately, you know, 20 lots or so, or 18 lots, if I remember correctly. They app, and lowered their density from roughly 3.6 dwelling units to 3.09 dwelling units to the acre. So, the exhibit on the left-hand side is the original plat that was before you on the second. The revised one is the larger one on the right-hand side. As you can see here, staff has annotated the plat to let you know where they, they haven't lost all of the lots that were discussed at that particular hearing. But what they did do is add the tot lot, based on some of the discussion that was heard at the hearing. They did remove the request for attached products, so all of the units within this proposed development are now all the single-family detached homes. And you can see here, they roughly lost, compromised with a total decrease in lots to, to the number of five. So, again, staff feels this still is, takes a discretion from you to allow the minimal step up from three units to the acre to 3.45 dwelling units to the acre. Staff has received additional written testimony on this application since it was heard on the second. There was four neighbors had, supported the council's recommendation to reduce the lots and not allow the reduction in the step up in density. And then, we also received testimony in which one of the residents did not agree with the, the notice of requirements of the code, felt like we violated that. We should have required a greater notice rather, of, rather than 300-foot radius, we should have had a greater notice, radius notification. But our code only requires that we notice annexations and plats with a 300-foot radius. So, we, we are in good standings in, as far as our ordinance goes. And then, Steve and Kathy Stark, again, if you recall at the last hearing on the second, there was a lot of discussion around the floodplain and how that would impact their property on the other side of Amity Road. And so, they want to make sure that this body remembers that discussion and that they incorporate the appropriate conditions in this project. If you were, were to improve this particular project this evening, they want to make sure that both culverts are upgraded per their required sizing, based on the study that will be required as part of this project. The applicant did commit to making those changes and those adjustments, so I think we have them on record. But again, they want to make sure that that's incorporated into the staff report. Again, staff is recommending approval of this particular project. It did come before you with a recommendation from our planning zoning commission. As I mentioned to you, the lot count isn't exactly what you had requested of the applicant. So, I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation and stand for any additional questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions of staff? So, council, this was, before we get into Matt's comments here, this was heard on January 2nd. That was a council meeting I was absent at, so part of preparations for today's hearing was going through the entire record from the initial application. We reviewed that, reviewed everything in the public record, the staff reports from P&amp;Z City Council, December 4th, December 24th, public testimony that was submitted in writing, Bill Pro, Dave Halumbo, I'm going to say some of these wrong, but Elise Praceto, Elise Paulson, Lisa Nomura, Steve and Kathy Stark in their live testimony at the last hearing, Susan Karns, Susanna Bolum, William, I can't read my own handwriting, William Prodorfer, I apologize, William, if you're here, because I know that's probably not your last name. All of that to say, as part of being able to participate in today's hearing, the entire record was reviewed and all of the minutes were read. So, I feel, because of all that, comfortable participating today and, in the discussion and ultimate decision, so.
Mr. President.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Mr. President, I as well was gone that day, and thank you for stating all the names and everything. I did spend about three hours this morning reviewing everything and feel that I am prepared to participate in the conversation as well.
Council, one of the, and people, I guess, if you're watching, or folks here, one of the reason that it's, we probably are going to do a better job stating that on the record. Council, when we miss, we always do that, review everything, review minutes, prepare, catch up if we're ever going to participate in something that we miss. But we'll all do a better job making sure that we say that on the record, we tell you publicly, it's important for you to know that. We know the work that we do, and we understand that that's necessary to make a decision, but sometimes I think we fail to share that with you, which is our fault. So, we're going to try and do a better job on those occasions when we miss to make sure you know, make a record that we've done that, got caught up. So, the decision-making process and ultimate decision, at least you're comfortable that we're doing it with our eyes wide open and with a full understanding of the application. So, we'll do better going forward.
Go ahead. I don't know where you are.
Madam Mayor, we, Ms. Little Roberts and I just finished describing for the record the review of all the materials and the minutes necessary to participate today. So, it's, Mr. Schultz's turn to.
Hey, would the applicant like to come forward? Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Matt Schultz, 8421 South Ten Mile Meridian, here on behalf of Berkeley Building Company and the Warwick family, who is in the process of selling the property to Berkeley Building Company. They've been on the, they've lived on the property for many, many years. Mr. Paul Warwick, 101, here in a, a week or two. And he remembers dad building the house that he's still in right now, October 41, or that's when they bought it. He remembers when Pearl Harbor hit, they were building, they were building it. And we've had the opportunity to meet with the Warwick's a few times and enjoy his, his vitality and sparkle in his eye and firm handshake. And he actually, he remembers his dad building the barn across the street on the Wells property that we developed when he was five, back in 1923. He has a lot of good stories about the, the neighborhood. I said, "What was Meridian like back then?" He's like, "It was small." He used to go to work in Boise, and Meridian used to be kind of small, whatever that meant, I don't know. That's what, I believe that's what he said. "It was really small," you know, way back then. But anyways, I digress. So, thanks for letting us come back last time on January 2nd. Appreciate the opportunity to reevaluate our, our application. And that night, when I went back to the, to the office, I thought, "Okay, how is this different from, say, portions of Hill Century Farm, Sky Mesa, Reflection Ridge, and Tuscany?" And what jumped out at me was the, the attached product and the 40s. Our intent wasn't to lose a certain number of lots. We said, "Let's just eliminate those and see what, see what comes out of it." Wasn't a set number, and it ended up being five that we lost. And so, with that, we felt like we have kind of molded it and actually exceeded amenity-wise and some other things, comparisons to other adjacent subdivisions in, in doing so. So, we felt comfortable coming back with this. I, I acknowledge we didn't go all the way down to all R4. I did look at it that night, though, said, "What if we did go back to all R4? What would that, what would that generate?" Or, you know, there's a 3.0, you know, number that we talked about, but there's also what about just all R4, which is considered a low density. And I put it in my, my cover letter here, that we get about 116 lots, about 3.2 to the acre. So, in my experience of doing this over the last 20-plus years as an engineer and as a planner, laid out a lot of lots myself. I mean, this, this is my layout, I give it to the engineer, they, they do what they got to do, but I really am familiar with the stats. And what makes it so interesting to do this is every site's different. Every piece of property has a different shape, every piece of property has a different size, has a different efficiency, if you will, as to how it, how it yields on a, on a, on a density, this number that we use for gross density, which is the, the area out to center line of the road, out to center line of a ditch, divided by total number of units. We use that as a, as a guide to how close we are to, to the goals of that comprehensive plan. Everyone's different. It's, it's amazing, you can use the same number, same size of lot, say, our R4 at the south here is, is 3.36 to the acre, pretty efficient, you know, just over the 10% open space on its own. We use that same size of lot across the street on Wells, which we did, came out at 2.7. It just was less efficient. It just, it just was. It was just the shape, it was the amount of ditches, the amount of road, it just, that's the way it came out. So, I don't like to get too hung up on the exact number. In my experience, R4 will lay out between about 2.6 and 3.4, 3.5. That's just where it lays out. Every, just everyone's different, some are more efficient than others. And we felt it was important to provide a mix, to provide some different size. In, in exchange for that, go with exceptional open space, exceptional amenities, and all those things that we've done here. As far as amenities, we have five, I think two are required in terms of the playground, the pool, the, the pathway, over 15% open space is considered an amenity. And then, we actually have a more, more than just a poolhouse, it's like a little clubhouse. So, we have five. When it comes to the percentage of open space, like I said, this is really a good, solid number we feel proud to have. Really want this to be a premier subdivision of South Meridian, which is a premier area and destination place to live. Done a lot of projects over the years down here, and I'm proud of it. So, the pool was something we wanted to do, and I wanted to mention that, in our experience, at least from what I know about, about Tuscany and Reflection Ridge, they get a, a pool for about every 250 residents, 250 lots. Tuscany's got 1,000 lots, four pools. And Reflection, Reflection Ridge has 250 lots, one pool. I don't know about the other guys. This has one per 125. So, it's doing better in that regard, too. Not, everybody's going to use a pool. I think some people that buy here are going to like the idea of they could use the pool, or their grandkids could use the pool, if they wanted to. Now, whether they do or not, I don't know. But it's a good, it's a good thing to have, along with the playground, same thing. Not everybody's going to use it, but some will. So, with that said, we think that what we brought back before you is something that matches what's in the area, has exceptional amenities, exceptional open space. And speaking of the Starks, that was their one opposition, that, you know, they have a flood zone issue that we're going to fix, go out of our way to fix across the street. That's not really our fault, that we're not going to make it worse, we're going to make it better, in fact, by, by fixing two culverts instead of one. But one of their other issues at the neighborhood meeting and also at P&amp;Z, I'm not sure if she mentioned it or they mentioned it at, at city council, was the attached product. And so, I made sure I mentioned that to her before I walked in, "Hey, we got rid of the attached," and she said, "Thanks." So, anyways, we did that. So, just for the record, I don't know what you got for all the written testimony, but they were our only person who showed up that was a pseudo protester, and even that was more about the flood zone than anything else. As far as the, if you do make a recommendation for approval, we would like to request, there's two parcels on this piece, that we, we get an early billing permit potentially before plat records for the pool and the, we want to get that going sooner than later. And so, that would be something that's at your discretion to allow, and we, subject to all the other requirements that planning and zoning has to pull billing permits. So, with that, we're excited about it, we're proud of it. One other issue about the schools, you know, that was hot button for at least one person. These more efficient lots, from our experience, and, and like, like counsel, Malam said, it could be 100 kids or 700 kids. I remember that. You know, because it could. You just don't know, right? But in our experience, the initial buyers of these more efficient lots are downsizers, empty nesters, couples without kids that could have kids, and it could change over time. What we're seeing is like 60 to, 60 to 70% are of that category, and they all pay taxes whether they have kids or not to the schools. And so, we see that as our answer to the school issue. Not everybody in here is going to have kids, but they will still pay taxes to the school district. So, with that, we'll stand for any questions and ask for your approval. Thanks.
Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I just have one. On the, the lot reduction request that was made, was the, the decision to not eliminate the additional lots that were requested based on any physical features of the parcels themselves? Were you prevented from an engineering perspective from doing so? Or is it a more subjective, either business purpose behind it?
Excuse me, Mayor. Councilman, I'm sorry, as far as inability to take off more?
Correct.
It's, it's purely a business decision. Berkeley Building could pride itself on doing a variety of product type, all the way from, say, 300,000 up to 600, 700,000. And these more efficient lots give us a better cross-section of buyers to, to, to attract. And so, it is a business decision, very much so, that we want this. It's not, more lots is better, obviously, so that plays into it somewhat. But it really, truly is about having a variety of buyers that could get us, it's not even really affordable anymore, but around 300 for these smaller ones, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Susan Karns is the only one that signed up wanting to testify this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Karns, 5556 South Graphite Way.
Thank you, Susan.
Kathy Baumgartner, 2310 East Lake Hazel.
Thank you.
We'd like to open our remarks by expressing our deepest condolences to Councilman Keith Byrd's family and to you, his esteemed colleagues and friends. We'd like the public record to reflect our community's deepest respect for Mr. Byrd and his remarkable record of service to our city and his lasting indelible legacy. Thank you. We're here this evening representing the Southern Rim Coalition and to report, council, the consensus of the nearby neighborhoods regarding this application. As you've seen, the Warwick subdivision offers desirable amenities and generous open space. We thank the applicant, who is a Meridian resident and also desires sustainable neighborhoods, for designing a neighborhood that would be a highly desirable R8 neighborhood. However, this land is zoned R4. As you know, the Southern Rim Coalition is on the record for asking council to adhere to the current future land use map and to suspend all zoning step-ups until Meridian stakeholders have crafted a new vision for our city through its new comprehensive plan. In your September 4th meeting, you directed staff to quote, "highly discourage" unquote comprehensive plan text or map amendments. Our area of town is seeing numerous step-ups in residential density, especially step-ups from low density to medium. More significantly, our schools are overcrowded, and they are facing an even greater crisis of overcrowding. At this moment, hundreds of homes, at least 891 by our count, are just now entering or soon will enter the pipeline for our schools. Hillsdale Elementary, as of today, was built with a capacity for 650 students. Today's enrollment is 788. Kathy has a list for you of the homes broken down. So, you can see, out of these 891, almost every single one is under construction or let yet come online. Sky Mesa, 278 homes, the streets are just now nearing completion. None of those homes are built. This application elicited an especially vocal and negative response from our neighborhoods and those most affected by it, the Sky Mesa and White Bark residents and parents of school-aged children. Many expressed their anger that the applicant reduced his original iteration by only five rooftops. We see no compelling reason to justify this higher density, which is essentially a zoning step-up. While we are actively creating a new comprehensive plan, our area has numerous R8 neighborhoods, our schools are grossly over capacity. And the nearby White Bark neighbors, who had very recently purchased their homes with the assurance their back fence neighbors would be comparable R4 lot sizes, are few in number, only seven have moved into their new homes. And the adjoining Sky Mesa homes are under construction. These residents do not have a resident-run HOA to support this plea to council, that you adhere to the comprehensive plan and the city's legal right to restrict this land to R4 density standards and dimensions. We deeply appreciate the quality of this R8 application, but respectfully request that you deny Warwick subdivision unless it meets 3.1 or lower density. Stand for questions.
Thank you, Susan. Council, any questions? Thank you to you both.
I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge to council that Matt Schultz has been really very professional and outstanding in his communication with us and discussing his application and its amenities and benefits. So, just would like to express our respect to him. Thank you.
Thank you for adding that. Thank you, Kathy.
No other signups.
Okay. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else? Sir. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen Stark. I'm at, I live at 2630 East Amity Road. And my letter to the city council explained a concern I had about, uh, the floodplain on our property being increased from the established FEMA floodplain map as it stands today. And I expressed this concern at the last city, city council meeting. And, uh, the two points I'd just like to verify is that, um, Matt just commented that he would make things better, but I, as I, older I get, the more stickler I am about details, you know? So, what I would like to make sure is that the two culverts would be replaced. Uh, the floodplain would be reduced on our property, and that would be no cost to us. And I wanted to ensure that these commitments made by Schultz, uh, Matt Schultz at the, and the Berkeley Building Company at the last meeting was incorporated in any approvals today. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Yes, ma'am. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Kathy Stark, 2630 East Amity Road, Meridian.
Thank you.
Matt, I, I do appreciate him getting rid of the joined, or I call them duplexes, connected housing, and the tot lot. But we still have R8. And that's a step-up in density. And our schools are really overcrowded. I was just doing a little research, and I found, um, a program, KT, what was it? I have to put my readers on, K-I-T, K-I-V-I-TV had a program saying, um, called Making the Grade. And they interviewed Eric Exline, and he stated that in West Ada's school district, there's already been 14,000 houses, sites approved. And that he asked, and I can quote him here, it says, "That's a big number." Like I said, that's 11,000-ish future kids that'll show up when those houses are built and sold out. 11,000. That's scary. Rocky, um, he said Rocky is about 600 over, and Mountain View is 500 over. But the other two, um, major high schools, Centennial Eagle, are also over. So I thought, is this true? I'm gonna call him. So I called him, and he said, "It is true." But he also said that Mountain View is gonna get 18 extra classrooms. And I said, "How many students will that accommodate?" And he said, "170." But they were about 500 over. So that doesn't even take care of the overcrowding that we currently have. And with, like the other gal said, we have Century Farms. They're not totally built out. White Bark, the Weld subdivision. Sky Mesa, huge. I drove by there today, and they're just putting their streets, and there's lots of houses in there. And then, I heard, now, I don't know if this is true, you guys would know better than me, that there's 1,800 homes that there's in the works of planning, Lake Hazel and Locust Groveish, I think by the new park area. That's incredible. And I asked Mr. Exline, I said, "So what's the next school slated for our area?" Because the elementary's overcrowded, the junior high's overcrow, or middle school's overcrowded, the high school's overcrowded. And he said that it would probably be an elementary school, but it would be a while. So, I have a great concern for the kids and the overcrowding that they're already experiencing, and that this is not gonna be relieved by a step-up in density. And, you know, while I appreciate the extra amenities, I don't think it's a fair exchange for a step-up in density. So I would ask that you would hold to the comp plan and do R4. And the other thing I just wanna say is, thank you guys for your time. I know it's a thankless job at times, I'm sure, but we do appreciate your service to the city, and we'd like to see our city stay a great place to raise a family, to live, and for our kids to be educated. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any further testimony? Yes. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Joe Atala, 2275 South Eagle Road, Meridian.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your consideration of this project. I'm with Berkeley Building Company, and I guess, a few things. One, there's been a lot of discussion about the schools, and the impact that this project would have on the schools. And from the discussion that I've been hearing, it sounds like we're somewhat being punished for other communities that have already been approved ahead of us. As I, you know, as I look at the redesign of the plat, and, you know, please understand that the reduction of only five units versus what had been discussed last time was not in any way meant as an offense. But to reiterate some of what Matt was saying, we really looked at the plat, some of the concerns at the time, also, um, what the comp plan goals are, and whether our project met those goals. And as far as, um, the number of home sites, and how that affects the schools, you know, again, as Matt said, the smaller lots, our experience has been, in other communities that we've built with these smaller lots in, um, Meridian, is typically, like you said, empty nesters, also, you know, families starting out with, without school-aged children, young couples, singles. And that type of, uh, home provides that opportunity for them. So as we were looking at laying out the, um, the plat, to answer your, you know, to speak to your question about, you know, whether it was a business decision, Councilman Borton, I, I did not, I couldn't in good conscience create a plat that only had homes that would ultimately be $500,000 and up. And when I looked at it, I thought, this would be a great location in keeping with the other communities surrounding us, and, you know, create a premier community with great amenities, great, um, lifestyle opportunities for, you know, people who can't afford $500,000 houses. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about affordability in Meridian, and, you know, what does that look like exactly? And a lot of people feel that $300,000 is still not affordable, but it is a step in, you know, in the door that, in most communities right now, that's not really an option. So, when I look at it, I feel like the number that we're talking about is maybe an additional, you know, losing an additional 15 lots, and I look at that number compared to, how does that affect the overall community that we're requesting? And, um, what type of lots that would have, and ultimately what price point of homes, and whether, you know, we can afford to provide this level of amenity in the community with the fewer lots. So, that's the reasoning for, um, our resubmital of the design, and, um, kind of what we're trying to achieve, I guess, with the community.
Thank you. Your, your time is up. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just one. I, I appreciate that. It, the amenity package is, is fantastic, with what you're providing, which probably necessitates the lots in order to cover it, which I get. Do you think that an application of this size, when we talk about a diversity of housing opportunities, is that a concern that's more appropriate from a citywide, kind of macro perspective? That we try to address and provide a diversity, diversity of opportunities throughout the city? Or do you think we should focus and make that type of requirement upon each individual application?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, to answer your question, obviously, that's something that does need to be considered citywide. And where appropriate, when we looked at the site and saw the, um, again, the surrounding neighborhoods that also had the little bit higher density as part of their community, like Century Farm, Tuscany, even Sky Mesa, that we abut. And considering the fact, now, this may have changed, I don't know, but the Albertsons is supposed to go on the corner, the proximity to the freeway, the proximity to business centers, we felt that this type of density was appropriate. And honestly, we didn't feel like we were asking for, you know, anything crazy, um, you know, not putting apartment units or anything like that on there. We just felt like, in this location, that level of density and this product type, um, was appropriate. I hope that answers the question.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further testimony? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
That piece of ground I was raised on.
Sir, can we first find out what your name is?
My name is Roger Warwick.
Roger, thank you.
The ground belongs to my father, Paul Warwick. He was born on the corner of Amity and Eagle Road in 1918. That house you see there wasn't there. If you look across the road, up, uh, from the house, there's a little house with a, with a porch on it, and he was born there. He still lives on this property. He'll be 101 years old the 23rd of this month.
Wow. That is, congratulations.
I lived on that property. He was raised across the road from that property. My grandfather rented that place where he was born. Three years later, he bought the ground on the north side of the road, and my dad was raised there. Then, he moved out the day he married my mother, and nine months later, I was born. And I was born in Nampa, Idaho. And then he bought that piece of ground, 10, the first 10 acres from my grandfather. And I was three years old when we moved into that house. He has lived there all that time. He's not in very good shape, but he wants to see this approved and see it go. And he's lived in that thing, right there, within a half a mile, all that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, is there any further testimony? Matt, any wrap-up remarks?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I do appreciate the partial support, Susan Carnes. I'll take it, take what I can get, some nights, uh, and, um, I do wanna just kinda emphasize that this was not zoned R4, which was mentioned. It is comprehensive plan low, and there, there has been a giving of some step-ups, and others, hey, no more, but it's still on the books, they'll allow, and this is a very, this is a step-up, like, like I said last time, this is a step-up an inch, not 10 feet. This is literally, in my cover letter that I submitted, you can see where an R4 lays out 3.36, the R8 lays out 3.56. We're really, really, really splitting hairs here. And I, this is not high density, even though we're asking for a step-up, we're getting into semantics, but the reality is, this is just a handful of lots. And, and to Joe's point, allows him to offer this amenity package, which benefits everybody in the neighborhood, the neighbors as well, more so than having all R4 lots. And I heard a 3.1, which is better than 3.0, but, but still, like I say, R4 does lay out denser than that with ample open space. It just does. And I, I just would hate to see you guys start shooting down R4s even at 3.3. I mean, that would be really, really sad, if it got to that, because it just would, it just wouldn't be the way that things have been done around here for, for a long time. So, in any case, um, I just wanna reiterate that, um, our average in the R4 is 9,000 square feet, our average in the R8 is 6,700 square feet. Yeah, R8 does allow 4,000 square foot lot. We're at 5,500 as our minimum. And our average is at 6,700, and the overall average of the whole thing is right at, really, really close to 8,000, it's 7958 square feet over the overall. So we're, our overall average is, it really is an R8 super light. It is not a, it's, it just allows some dimensional flexibility is really what it's allowing us. Um, maybe you're really, really close to an R4, so. In fact, 75% of our lots are over the 7,000, over 7,000 square feet. So I just wanna reiterate that, um, and hopefully, we, we get a motion for approval, and, and we can, uh, fulfill, uh, Paul's dad's wishes and see this thing go. So, thank you.
I like the addition you have of new planning terminology, an R8 super light. So, you know, our conference plan is gonna have all kinds of unique definitions, right? Okay. Counsel, any further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I think this is probably a question for Bill. We had a couple of letters from a gentleman who said that this would give him, like, three neighbors behind him, and it doesn't look like any of the areas that changed would have rectified that. Do you have a map that would show us that?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I don't have an exhibit for you on that this evening, but if you look on the open space exhibit before you, that gentleman was referring to the westernly boundary of this particular project, uh, north of the Stub Street. You can see there's some lighter lines along that exhibit, and those are some White Bark lot lines that were plotted with that subdivision. So what, what he's referring to is, there's potential for two lot lines, two homes facing each lot along the east boundary, their west boundary along the White Bark subdivision. So it's, it's highlighted in this area here, if you can see the cursor. You can see how the lot lines split between the parcels of White Bark and this particular subdivision. That's, that was the email that we received from that gentleman today, and that was his concern.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's no further questions for the applicant, those who testified, or staff, I would entertain a motion to close. Or not.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we close item 10D.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
90. Sorry. Sorry, it's 90.
That's all right. We knew what you were talking about. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I'll just jump right in. I don't, I don't know where the rest of the council is. I was, I was very disappointed to see that, after what I thought was fairly extensive feedback from council, to give the applicant another opportunity to get this right, and come back, and only see five lots removed, to me was disappointing. So, I'm not, uh, supportive of this application. I don't know if any members of council have anything they wanna talk about. If not, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I was hoping to see, I guess, more, more lots removed. However, with the amenity package, and the, the nice subdivision, and the mix of housing options that this offers, I think this is a nice project. It's barely over the, the amount. I mean, as far as a step-up, it's barely a step-up. It's like a little, two inches up. And it's 12 or so houses more than it would need to be. So we're talking about overcrowding in schools. We're talking about 12 houses, which, based on statistics, is like eight kids or something. So, I, I don't think that this subdivision, the way that it is, is going to, on its own, push schools into overcrowding. That's a whole other problem, and, and that's not one that we've been using necessarily to make decisions on. gone back to planning and zoning, made some changes. Um, it's a better product, so I'm glad we waited a month. I like it better, and, and I'm, I'm approving it. Who else?
Okay.
Different motions.
Motion's always in order.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Move that we approve H-2018-0115.
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry to interject in the motion, but if you approve this project as you see it this evening, there are some conditions of approval that need to be modified to reflect that approval. We have some conditions here that don't, for example, as the applicant testified, we're removing that attached product component. So, we have elevations tied to the staff report, and we have conditions that they depict zero lot line. So, if you would just allow me to indulge you, which conditions, uh, need to be removed and modified, and then I would, can proceed with an accurate motion so that we can capture it as part of the record. That's your pleasure.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's assuming we don't know the outcome.
Right.
But any motion should be detailed.
Yes, yes, please, thank you. So, the first item would be DA provision 1D. Planning and Zoning Commission did strike the requirement for a tot lot, and the applicant does have that as part of their proposal this evening, so we want to add that back into that DA provision. We have condition 2C that requires the zero lot line, so if there aren't going to be any attached product as part of this development, that condition is no longer relevant, and we need to strike it. Condition number nine requires design review for all single-family attached homes. Again, if there isn't going to be attached product, we don't need to do design review for that particular, uh, for any of the homes within the development. The other item that I would add is, if, in, as part of the applicant's testimony, he asked to have the ability to be able to pull a building permit for the clubhouse before Platts recorded. Now, it's something that I discussed with the applicant and other department heads within community development, and they were amenable to that request. So, if that's something you're in favor of, you can certainly add that as a provision to the development agreement, that they're allowed to pull one, obtain building permit for the clubhouse prior to a plat recording. And then the other item is, if you so inclined to agree with the Stark's testimony this evening, add a condition for the upsizing of the two culverts as part of the study. With that, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Mayor, can I just add those comments to the motion?
Ms. Mylum, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
And I echo many of the comments Councilmember Mylum made. I think that the, the amenity package, um, the commitment to really building a quality part of our community is well appreciated. I also think that it's, the two and a half years, I think, that we've heard from individuals from the Southern Rim Coalition, I don't think I've ever heard them praise an applicant. So, that's a big deal. That's a really big deal to me, Matt, and I appreciate your willingness to connect with our citizens in a real meaningful way. Obviously, still be voting against the motion, but it's not because I, I don't value the quality of product and, and really a reflection of your due diligence and throughout this process.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I originally, um, voted in favor of this project. As those who are in attendance know, um, you know, we value, I, I value step-ups and, and especially, um, the importance of, of, of why the discussion, the why we talk about step-ups and the importance of them, and, and why they may or may not affect different areas of our community, and so I appreciate that dialogue. Um, I appreciate the applicant, um, making changes, um, to this proposed, uh, application. I appreciate the, uh, sentiments of the Southern Rim Coalition. They're a, uh, a strong voice in that, in, in, in that neck of the woods, and, and, uh, I value their opinion immensely. I, I look at this project, and I value that, also, I also value the, uh, the diversity of, that this, this project brings. It's, um, I understand it's, um, it may add kiddos to the schools, uh, or it may not, depending on who moves in, but, um, I, I, I like this project, and, and I know that it is a step-up, but it's, it's, it's a small step-up. Um, and so, with that, with that said, I'm, I, like I voted before, when, um, I, I voted for it then, and I'll be voting for it this evening.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Just on the, the, as the comprehensive plan process is, is being revised, and this issue of step-ups, I, I don't know where they are when the, in its discussion, but I'm, I'm certainly hopeful that it goes away. I think it probably helps applicants as well as the public to know if that opportunity's not there. If, if an area is intended to be low density, let's, let's be consistent with what our map says and with what we're telling the community, and the applicants can then go into it with, with an understanding that that's, you know, the rules are the rules with regards to what's planned there.
Agreed.
So, um, I'm not supportive of step-ups now, I'm not supportive of them in the future if they remain in our comp plan as proposed. I just think it's, it's not appropriate.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I think the value of the, the step-up opportunity is to, um, have the ability to do this when it's minimal and makes sense, as opposed to having to go through the process of a, um, map amendment, um, for more significant issues. So, I mean, there's going to be cases where this makes perfect sense to do a minor increase for essentially what would be the same project with a few extra houses, whereas it wouldn't be worth the effort maybe even to build it, um, with the, the level of amenities on a particular lot, or particular, um, size of land, I guess, um, without a minor step-up. So, I, I think there's definitely value to maintaining it, but apparently it's going away.
Madam Mayor, just.
Mr. Burton.
Well, never mind. It's probably a topic for comprehensive plan, not necessarily this application, but, good. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
No.
Okay, um, the ayes have it. So, item 9E is a public hearing, continue from January 22nd. On H-2018-0107. I will ask for staff comments at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Next item on the agenda is the Alicia Cork subdivision. The site consists of 3.084 acres of land currently zoned R4 and located at 40, 4,036 East Granger Avenue. Uh, this property was annexed, implanted with the Redfeather Estates subdivision back in 2006. Currently, the site is developed with an existing residence and an outbuilding that is to remain as part of the development. Comprehensive plan designation for this particular property is medium-density residential, and the applicant this evening is actually requesting a step-down in density, from medium-density to low-density residential. To develop the preliminary plat that's before you, it's going to be a six-lot subdivision, uh, five new structures, and as I mentioned to you, the existing structure would remain on Lot 1, Block 1, which currently takes access to Granger Street. Uh, this is a, a unique property. It's actually in a Butts, Boise, on the east boundary, and that's where the existing Stub Street is to this particular property. So, this is right at the edge of our area's city impact and our city boundaries, and so the, as, although this looks like a extension of a public street, it's actually a common driveway that's going to provide access to five of the new homes within this particular subdivision. And again, the existing home is taking access off of Granger Street. The applicant is requesting a council waiver for that to remain, because Granger Street is a collector's street on the master street map. And as you know, our UDC tries to limit access to collector's streets when local street is available. So, if the waiver is not granted this evening, the applicant would have to redesign the plat so that it would take access from the common drive that they're, they're proposing with the five other lots. Uh, when the subdivision was proposed back in 2005, 3, 4, 5, 6, when it got refinaled, utilities were stubbed to this particular property, um, hence the reason for the utility slash pedestrian connection into the development from East Granger Drive. This will serve as two purposes. One, it'll be a pedestrian connection into the development, but it also will have sewer and water that is brought into the site to serve the proposed development. Because this property is under the five-acre minimum, there is no required open space for the subdivision. I would mention to council that when this particular lot was approved as part of that subdivision, the council at the time did approve the common, the landscape buffer that's along the adjacent streets to be, um, depicted as an easement in lieu of a common lot. So, currently, the way the code's written, all common lots or all landscape buffers or uh, open space for subdivisions need to be owned by an HOA and placed in a common lot. This was given a pass back in the day by council to allow it to remain along with the current access that you see today. So, really, nothing changing on the particular property except for the intensification. Uh, so as far as the step-down request in density, so the applicant's gross density is 1.94 dwellings to the acre, which is quite a bit lower than what we see with the medium density, which is three to eight dwelling units to the acre. I would also mention to the, uh, the council that there is an existing fence along the frontage of the property as well, uh, where some of that fence does encroach within the required 20-foot landscape buffer that's required along the street, and so the applicant has been conditioned to either, one, remove the fence, or seek alternative compliance with their final plat application to allow the existing six-foot fence to remain at front of the property. It's hard to see on this landscape plan, but it's, it's delineated right in this location along the south boundary, so in front of that particular, uh, residence. Uh, the applicant did provide conceptual elevation, so due to the lot sizes on this particular property, they are proposing larger homes on the particular site. Staff has a condition in the DA, or at least the plat, that homes that back up against the collector's street would have changes in materials and modulation in the facade to break up monotonous wall planes, which is a standard condition these days. Our Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval at their hearing. Speaking in favor was Penelope Constantine, uh, Constantikes. Uh, no one testified in opposition, no one commented on the application, and we did not receive written testimony, and there weren't really no key issues of discussion. Uh, one of the items that was brought up at the Planning and Zone, the Zoning Commission, if I can step back here, was the realignment of the pathway. Uh, from a public works perspective, uh, staff felt that it was, uh, easier for them to have a straight route for utilities if they were relocate that utility corridor along lots 3 and 4 here, uh, but the commission went ahead and supported the applicant's position on it and left it the way it was designed. And then also, as this is not a required pedestrian connection into the pathway, and it will serve as a maintenance road for those utility extensions, the applicant did, uh, the commission approved the applicant to construct that pathway as, uh, decomposed granite in lieu of asphalt. So, uh, changes to the staff report, based on what transpired there with the commission's truck, site condition, site-specific condition of approval 1.0A. They modified site condition of approval 1.0B to allow the pathway and common lot to remain in the current location as you see it before you this evening. They did recommend that council grant the access for the existing home to remain off of Granger Street. They did support the applicant's request for the step-down in density. And then they modified, uh, condition of approval 2B to allow the maintenance road to be constructed of decomposed granite in lieu of the asphalt. So, really, the two outstanding issues for you this evening, and they're not really outstanding issues, but just something to take under your consideration, is, one, the, approving the step-down, and, two, allowing the existing home to take access. Uh, we did, staff did receive written testimony from the applicants representing in agreement with the commission recs. Uh, with that, I will conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions? Let's see applicant here. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Penelope Constantikes, Post Office, Box 405, Boise, 83701.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. So, uh, the applicant, the project team have reviewed the staff report with the updates and concur with the conditions of approval as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we do respectfully request that the subdivision be approved as designed. Bill brought up several items, uh, of note. One of them was the waiver request. Um, I did provide some traffic data with the application, um, and the trip generation or the traffic on both Granger and Grenadier is really pretty low for a collector. The Woods have lived there for a long time. Their house, I think, was built in 2003, and their garage does face the street, so we were hopeful that they would be able to continue to access their property at that location. And the step-down in density is a little bit unusual, especially given the conversation that preceded us about stepping up. It provides a nice variety, I think, without being, it's a small subdivision, so you're not putting in 20, 30, 40 large lots. It's just a nice size infill that buffers the neighbors to the north a little bit, um, and utilizes the property in an appropriate way, given its location. We will relocate or remove the fence that's sitting inside that easement right now, but those will all be converted to common lots with the subdivision, so all the landscape buffers are going to be parked inside common lots from this point forward. You know, we're, uh, more, less is always more. Less can be more, so, and you have things coming up behind us. So, rather than take up time discussing items that are in the staff report or the record from the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, I would be happy to just answer any specific questions that you have.
Council, any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
No, no sign-ups.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Okay. Council, any questions? For the staffer applicant. Okay, Mr. Burton.
I move that we close the public hearing for, um, H-2018-0107.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 9E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes? Mr. Burton.
I move that we approve item number 9E, H-2018-0107, which includes the approval, um, for the step-down in density from MDR to LDR, and allow the existing home on Lot 1, Block 1 to continue to access East Granger Avenue.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And that would include the relocation of the fencing.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anything further? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Okay, item 9F is a public hearing for H-2018-0057. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Next item on the agenda is the Bainbridge Franklin Annexation. Uh, the site consists of 3.6 acres of land currently zoned R1 in Ada County. It's located at 2075 and 2155 West Franklin Road. There is no history on this particular property, and the comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is mixed-use commercial, which is part of- map designation is mixed-use commercial, which is part of our 10-mile interchange-specific area plan. Originally, this application was scheduled to be in front of you. Originally came with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for denial. If you recall, the applicant came back before you in November, I believe, and asked for you to remand it back to P&amp;Z to see if they could correct some of those issues that the P&amp;Z commission, some of the concerns that they had, he heard during the P&amp;Z commission. We've done that. Staff has updated the staff report to reflect those changes. And that's really what I want to dive in this evening, as far as Planning and Zoning Commission overwhelmingly supported the changes to the plan and recommended approval to you this evening. But I wanted to go into and let you know the applicant is proposing to annex this particular site in with the CG zoning district, which is consistent with the mixed-use community designation. I would let you know that the site is currently operating with a small engine repair business, and one of the, the additional lot has a single-family residence. And typically, those are non-conforming uses under our code. So as part of our recommended DA provisions to you this evening, we are, have a provision that those uses cease upon annexation of this property. Our mixed-use community designations, we typically envision a mix of office, retail, recreation, employment, and other miscellaneous uses on this particular property in conjunction with some higher-density uses. Given the fact that this is only three acres in size, it makes it a little bit different to get a true mixed use for what's really envisioned for this particular property. I would also mention to you that target densities, if a residential component is contemplated for this land use, is between eight and 12 dwelling units to the acre. What's happened in the immediate area, and I think this commission or council is very aware of it, is we had adjacent properties to the east and to the west of this that have recently come through last several years and done multiple comp plan changes on the property. So we've added more of a commercial component and less of a residential component, although they did still include a lesser residential component. Staff believes that there is adequate land uses planned within the area and with additional concept plans that envision additional residential. So in this particular case, given the size of this particular property, we don't feel like the entire site needs to comply with all of those design elements of the comprehensive plan. So both planning, both staff and Planning and Zoning Commission were amenable to not having a residential component as part of this particular development. As I mentioned to you, the applicant has provided a conceptual development plan in which we usually get with an annexation request. The concept plan before you depicts five commercial pad sites ranging inside between 4,300 square feet, or structures ranging between 4,300 square feet and 29,250 square feet. The applicant is proposing one access from West Franklin Road, which has been approved by the Highway District. And as part of the mixed-use designations, we like to see projects integrated with the surrounding properties. So you can see to the, both the west and to the east, the applicant is providing cross-access to those properties in accordance with our UDC and in accordance with other development agreements that have been approved with the adjacent properties. One of the items that were discussed at Planning and Zoning, at least part of this designation, is having a consistent design theme in a certain density or intensity on the particular property. And so we went back to the drawing board with the applicant. We tried to get them to increase the square footage and the intensification on this property with their office component and come up with really a cohesive design theme. And that's what you see here with the back buildings. You can see there's a mixture of single-story, two-story, and three-story buildings on this particular site. The back building up along the residential uses here where you can see my cursor, that's going to be an indoor, potentially, an indoor storage facility, which would require a separate conditional use permit when, in fact, that use is proposed for the site. Or conceptually, that's what they're proposing this evening. And there's the retail component, office component. So there's a mix of commercial uses on the site, as I mentioned to you, but just not that residential component. I'd also mention to you, and I think you're pretty familiar with this, but because the applicant's requesting a CG zone, they're up against multifamily on the east boundary. And so if you can see my cursor here, because this zone is up against a residential use, typically, we require a 25-foot wide landscape buffer between commercial uses and residential uses. That's something that we discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. And staff is amenable to the 10-foot setback that the applicant is requesting, but that does take a council waiver to reduce that buffer with, down from 25 feet to 10 feet. And that's something that the applicant wants you to take under consideration this evening. Also, part of the mixed-use standards is having an open space or gathering area, and you can see the applicant has that, that ties into that street buffer along Franklin Road. So again, not all the elements are here, but a vast majority of them are here, and Planning and Zoning Commission did concur with that as well, and that's why they forwarded on a recommendation for approval to you this evening. So as I mentioned to you, we are recommending a DA with annexation. Nothing too heavy, but basically, the DA provisions before you this evening require compliance with the concept plan that's before you this evening. We want to make sure that the applicant or the development does include a mixture of both single, two-story and three-story structures on the site as proposed to be in alignment with the current future land use designation. Of course, if any ordinances change, we want the development to comply with those. All those uses and buildings on the site need to be removed upon annexation of the particular property. And as I mentioned to you earlier, we are requiring that they reciprocate cross-access to the adjacent properties, and that would be submitted with their first certificate of zoning compliance application. The applicant has provided pedestrian connections to the adjacent properties, so we've required that as well. And then they need to comply with the design standards in the 10-mile specific area plan as well. So item G is the one that pertains to the 25-foot landscape buffer along a portion of that east boundary, particularly where that self-storage use is adjacent to the multifamily currently under construction. We have some language there unless they obtain a waiver from you this evening, so it's, there's flexibility built in for the applicant. Your indoor self-storage use will require a separate conditional use permit, and it needs to comply with our specific use standards in the code. And then also, we want to limit access to this particular property, so we're fine with the one access, but we want to make sure there aren't any future accesses in the future. So one access point to Franklin Road is supported by staff and ACHD as well. So testifying at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we had Sean Nichol. The only key items of discussion at that, at the Planning and Zoning Commission was the parking. Currently, on the concept plan that's before you this evening, the applicant is depicting 96 parking stalls. In the staff report, I alluded to that self-storage facilities have a lower parking ratio than other commercial uses. So both commission and staff felt that the parking ratio proposed on the concept plan was adequate for this particular site. That's before you this evening. Really, there were no changes to staff's recommended DA provisions, and the only outstanding for you this evening is taking under the waiver, the recommendation for the reduced buffer along a portion of the eastern boundary. Staff is recommending, and Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending, has recommended approval. I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions?
Bill, this is actually, I find that. Bill, if I'm not mistaken, there isn't any current residential development next to the kind of the larger L-shaped commercial building, correct?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Cavaney, there is. There's actually what we call the Villas at 12 Oaks. It's a multifamily project along that boundary. So it's entitled, it's been approved for building permits, so it should be under construction pretty soon.
Madam Mayor, follow. Bill, do we know how far away that one of those developments is going to be then, from this building?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do not have that information for you.
All right. Thank you.
Certainly look it up if you'd like me to pull up a site plan. I can certainly dig into that and get that for you.
We can hear from the applicant and maybe.
If there's nothing further, would the applicant like to come forward? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, Sean Nichol, 247 North Eagle Road, Eagle, Idaho, here representing the applicant. Before I begin, I just want to say very nice tributes and love towards Keith Bird. He will be dearly missed. So thank you for announcing that. We worked very well with staff. As you realize, as you recall, we requested to go back to Planning and Zoning Commission to address those specific concerns that they had in their first recommendation towards you. Excuse me, staff did a really good job at kind of guiding us through the waters of that specific plan to make sure we didn't meet as many of those, of those standards as possible, including the multiple stories that we have before you. We do request that you consider the waiver of the 25-foot side setback. I don't have the site plan for that building next door, but I believe it's at least 25 feet from the property line east, which would give it another 10 feet to our building. We're in agreement with all the conditions of approval that staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended, and I'll just stand for any questions.
Thank you. Sean, counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Is that the 10-mile to the south? What's the southern border of this?
That, to the southern, the creek?
Yeah. What runs along the southern border?
It's not, it's not the 10-mile. It's a smaller, it's just a smaller ditch.
Okay. All right.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
One question, is, on the L-shaped building on the corner, is, that's going to be an indoor storage facility, it looks like? Is that a done deal?
Madam Mayor and council member, yes, the applicant is working on the plans right now and will be submitting a conditional use permit for that use.
So that would need to come back through the CUP process?
Yes, yep.
Madam Mayor, follow. My only concern was the parking, but if that's, I think that's appropriate parking for that type of business.
Yeah, it'll have very little parking demands because of the use.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Hi, Joe.
Over here, the fire department, thank you. I want to make sure that the applicant's aware of item 3.2 in the staff report about the two access points for buildings over 30 feet high. So three stories will require two points of access. So those proposed will need to be solidified before you can do that three-story building.
Madam Chair, I'm not going to pronounce your name.
Chief is good.
Deputy Chief. We'll make sure that we coordinate that with your department when we're designing the building.
Thanks, Joe. Anything further from counsel? Thank you.
Thanks again.
Mr. Clerk.
No signups, Madam Mayor.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Applicant, any further comment? Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There's no additional comment. I move we close the public hearing on H-2018-0057.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. All ayes?
Madam Mayor, just a comment, maybe before a motion. I applaud the applicant and property owner for taking the approach of listening to P&amp;Z, good remarks, good comments, asking for a chance to take a second crack at it. That's a really good approach and has brought a great product here before us, I think. So that's off to you for addressing it the way you did. I'll make a motion and see if there's any discussion for it. I'm going to move that we approve H-2018-0057 as presented. And as to the issue of the 10-foot, I believe it's to the east, is that right? The setback to the east, allowing the 10-foot as proposed rather than the 25 that would otherwise be required. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavaney.
I typically kind of frown on those reductions. I think, though, in this particular application, it's appropriate. Don't like making it a habit of these types of requests, but I think in this particular instance, I don't have a lot of concerns. I'm supportive of the motion. And, Madam Mayor, just to echo Councilmember Borton's comments, and I think that's good for our council to hear, appreciate staff re reminding us that the applicant was the one that wanted to go back to P&amp;Z. We don't see that a lot, and I echo Councilmember Borton's comments, appreciate you doing your due diligence on that front.
If there's nothing further, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaney?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Good job. We got the collision.
Okay. Item 9G is public hearing for H-2019-0002. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next project before you this evening is for a development agreement modification. Site consists of 1.73 acres of land. It's zoned IL, and it's located at 1724 East Franklin Road. In 2017, the property was rezoned from IL to CG. A comprehensive plan map amendment was processed at that time as well. The recorded DA records compliance with commercial design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. The applicant requests modification to the existing development agreement to revise the building elevations from those approved with the original agreement. Those are on the left-hand side. The original elevations included steel panels with exclusive, or extensive glass storefront and overhead doors. The applicant is requesting a modification to replace the northern glass storefront component with stucco and glass roll-up doors to access vehicle bays on the west side of the site. So it's over here.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Bird would have loved that elevation. All that glass?
Glass.
Awesome. Sorry. Couldn't help myself.
It's a beautiful elevation, for sure. The originally proposed elevations do not comply, so the ones that are on the right-hand side, the ones that they're, were originally proposing, we actually received revised revisions, or revised elevations too. So these elevations do not comply with a couple of the design standards found in the Architectural Standards Manual for commercial districts. Specifically, the Architectural Standards Manual requires that buildings include some kind of banding along the base of buildings to provide a visual anchor and that they use at least two field materials on facades. Staff included conditions in the staff report regarding those areas that needed revision, and the applicant has since provided revised elevations. The revised elevations are here, and they are more in line with the Architectural Standards Manual requirements for commercial districts. Revisions do provide banding around the base of the building, which is one of staff's conditions. However, staff is still recommending that initial field material be added to the building elevation. The applicant has shown two different shades of gray stucco. Staff would like to see a greater variation in color, additional score lines, or some kind of variation in texture to help create more compliance with the Architectural Standards Manual. Staff would also like more information regarding the dimensions of modulation and articulation, and recommends that the applicant provide further detail with the CCC and Design Review application. Staff recommends approval of this project, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. Counsel, any questions at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just one. Stephanie? What is field material? Like landscaping or something else?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, field material is like the main material that's used. So we have, it would be, on this example, it's the stucco because it's the primary material. Accent material would be the stone, for example. So in the Architectural Standards Manual, basically, for commercial districts stipulate that they use two field materials, so two different materials to kind of add variation to the facade rather than just one wall of one kind of material. Hopefully, that answers the question.
Madam Mayor? Yeah, so if they're being required, if they're required to comply with the architectural design manual, that would dictate how many field materials? It reads as though, it looks as though you're asking us to require an additional fields, an additional field material? Is that the case? We need to make that recommendation?
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, I guess, yes, technically, you're right. In the CCC and the Design Review, they will be presenting the elevations, and they'll have to comply with Architectural Standards Manual. In this case, we were kind of hoping for a little bit more than their, I believe that they do comply with that, but we're hoping for a little bit more just because the original elevations were so nice, I guess. elevations were so nice, I guess, and, and to help them kind of come into more of the character that's in the area, to kind of be more consistent with the other buildings that have been constructed. So, thank you for the clarification.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So, we're going from what was to this because the applicant wanted to change or because we wanted the applicant to change it?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, they want the change. They originally, when they annexed in and, and did the comp plan change, they agreed to commercial standards and decided elevations and have since decided that they'd rather go this route, so.
Would the applicant like to make comment? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mark Flatter-Johann. My address is 2022 South Ridge Point Way, Boise, Idaho.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for your time. We've decided to change to this type of construction because a glass structure really isn't correct for an auto body. There are things in the auto body shop that can fly around the shop. They do welding, they do grinding, and trying to keep all that storefront clean would be difficult at best. So, the cops really feel that this would be a better application for their shop and more meet their needs, so we would like to change to this type of construction from all the storefront.
Thank you. I see that you did this in 2007 when Mr. Bird was on here. We figure that you put all the glass in there to impress him, right?
Well, I wasn't involved in the project at that time, so I can't comment on that.
I didn't think he needed to. I, that was unjust. Any questions for Mark? Mr. Birdt.
Mark, are, to just clarify, are you in agreement with staff's recommendations for the different elevations and the, the field color and such?
Yes, as, as you can see, from the previous elevation we submitted, we've added the rock around the banding around the bottom. We've also added the vertical accents around the building to try and, again, modulate the building and break up the different surfaces. We also modulated the parapet at the top of the building a little bit so that you have different elevations there, so it isn't just a large box, but it actually has some character and movement to it.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I noticed you also added some purple trees.
We were thinking of you.
Well, some people would call it pink, you know? I would call it pink.
Effusia.
They, they are very beautiful.
It depends on what monitor you're looking at as to what color.
That's true.
Matches my sweater.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
None indicating that they wanted to provide testimony, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. This is a, a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide comment on this application? Mr. Birdt.
I move that we close Item 9G, H-2019-0002.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Birdt.
I move that we approve Item 9G, H-2019-0002.
Second. I have a question.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Does that motion include the changes that staff is asking them to still make regarding color or adding another type of field material?
Yes, I believe absolutely it does, and the applicant agreed to that in an early question I asked him, so I think, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Birdt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye. All ayes, motion carried. Item 10A was vacated. It will be placed on a later date when our chiefs are healthy again. Item 11A is Ordinance 18-1774B. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number 18-1774B, an amended ordinance filed H-2018-0006 FAST Eddies for annexation of a parcel of land, being a portion of Lot 2, Block 1 of Jasmine Acres Subdivision, Book 59 of Platts at Pages 5,829 through 5,830, Records of Ada County, Idaho, and a portion of unplanted lands situated in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 32 and the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 33, Township 4 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 1.50 acres of land from RUT to CG, General Retail and Service Commercial Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard Item 11A read by title. Is there any discussion or do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
We approve Ordinance Number 18-1774B, suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Item 11A. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Birdt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember McCavaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Under Item 12, any items for this number for 12? Other than the State of the City is tomorrow at 3:29. I know, what a shock. It is at Wahoo's in the Gallery Event Center, and the Taste of Meridian is in Wahoo's cafeteria or restaurant area. So, they have a nice space, and it looks actually pretty roomy. Mr. Bird's funeral is also scheduled for Saturday, February 9th at noon at the Meridian Middle School. So, if there's nothing further, Item 13 is the executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move that we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74-2061A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Birdt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.